Welcome to the zoning board of appeals of the village of Bronxville. I'm Stuart McIntosh and I'll be chairing tonight's meeting. I'm joined by my colleagues Janie Regan, Charlie Law, John Brown, Mary Ellen Carpenter, and Greg Jacknow. So for approval tonight, you need a majority vote. There will be five of us voting. Everyone will be voting except for Greg will not be voting tonight. So you need three consenting votes for approval. We have two applications tonight. We're going to start with 43 Sturgis. Who will be presenting? Please just make a point of speaking into the mic and introducing yourself, please.
Hi, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Andrew Collingham. I'm the architect for 43 Sturgis Road representing my clients Christina Criticos and Kevin White. This project was brought about as a need for more living space. Having four children, things are a little tight on the first floor of this house. So the whole concept of this project is to take the existing two-car attached garage and enclose it to make it living space into a family room. Currently, we have the living room as part of the house. Paul, if you want to go to the first floor plan, keep going. Currently, there's the living room, but that's more of a formal setting. We also have the enclosed sunroom, which is on the right side. It's a smaller room. It's only about 10 feet by 13 feet. A couple more, Paul. Keep going, a couple more slides. Yep, that one. If you look on the right side of the bottom proposed plan, you'll see the sunroom. That's currently the room that the owners go to to get together as a family. And if you look on the left side of the top plan, you'll see that's the two-car attached garage. So the plan is to enclose that into living space and have that as a family room, which is close to the kitchen. We'll have access to the exterior, so it's a good location for this type of program. So that presents the problem of where do we put a garage? So we need to add a garage now. And looking at the site plan, if you want to go back two slides, Paul. Just looking at the setbacks in the property, it's one thing to note that currently Sturgis Road, our property 43, is a corner lot. Most of the houses on this road in close proximity are corner lots, and they have a substantial front yard setback. Currently, we have about a 45-foot setback, and the minimum required is 30. It's a gracious prominent front yard, but that leaves little room in the rear yard for a project like this. So we went through some options. Thank you. Perfect, thank you. One option was to put something in the front, right there. But that would obviously be detrimental to not only the house, but the fabric of the neighborhood. That would ruin that gracious feel of the front yard, not something that myself or the owners or I don't think any of you would want to see. So that was kind of out the window in the beginning. So then we landed on putting something in addition in the back of the house in the top left that you see there. We actually started with a smaller footprint, but a two-story structure. So we had the garage on the bottom floor, of course, and then upstairs, we thought it would be nice to have an additional office space with just like an additional sort of at the end of COVID, it was nice to have that home office area. We did some significant amount of work on that. We did drawings, and I handed to everyone here a new packet of drawings, of which towards the end is alternate design one. And that was the original set of drawings that we filed with the building department, received a denial letter. After that, during that process, we had spoken to some of the adjacent property owners, and they felt that a two-story structure was a bit imposing, too daunting of a project. So we listened to the feedback of the neighbors. We respected their interests, and we decided that a one-story structure along with the privacy hedge in the back would be a better project. So we amended or revised our submitted set of drawings. We got a new denial letter from Mr. Taft. And the project that you have in front of you now is the current layout, which is a slightly larger footprint, about double the size of the original two-story. So we took the two-story, chopped off the top story, and slid the garage over. So now the garage is a front access garage with the office being on the right side of the addition, and then a mudroom to connect to you from the garage area into the house. That's where we landed at there. We also did some research, looking at the other neighboring properties. And we've noticed again that most of the adjacent properties and properties within the radius, specifically corner properties, have that gracious front yard with a limited rear yard. However, they seem to solve their problem in a similar situation directly to the left or to the west of our subject property, which is 41 Sturgis. Paul, I don't know if you want to back up. There's a map, maybe five or six slides back. Keep going to the left a little more. Keep going a little more. Yeah, that's good. So you'll see our subject property with the blue dot on it. You'll see a hatched area of proposed addition. And then the property immediately to the left, which is the west, is 41 Sturgis. They did a similar project around 2010, and they were granted zoning variance for a rear yard setback of about 9.9 feet. Also, the property just south of our subject property, which is 42 Sturgis, in circa 1971, did an addition project with a garage, and they have about a five-and-a-half-foot setback there. Directly to the east or to the right of our property across Sunny Bray Place is 45 Sturgis. They have a 9.8 approximately setback, but that was original. That was not granted via variance. So we took into consideration what the other houses were doing. We felt like this project puts us more in line or on par with what the neighbors have done in the past. And you can see that our house is considerably undersized relative to the adjacent properties, and we feel like this is really bringing us to their level with this project. Not to mention, it gives the current owners much more interior living space, more family space. It's much more functional for their needs as a family, again, having four children. So that's kind of where we're at in terms of the project.
I have a question.
Yep.
I'm hearing and reading a lot about what the neighbors have. Can you tell me how that's relevant to our inquiry here? I mean, this isn't legal precedent or anything. We're taking this on a one-off basis based on their particular situation, not based on, you know, whether they deserve to have a variance because the neighbors had one or got one.
Yes. Well, like I said, there's similar projects, 41 and 42 Sturgis.
Mm-hmm.
They were garage addition projects in the past, one in 2010, one in 1971. It's just an interesting fact to bring up that these variances were granted, one at a 9.8 setback and one at a roughly five-and-a-half feet setback.
Well, that was one, the most recent one was 10 years ago. The other one was 50 years ago.
Correct, yep.
And the code was recently changed. You know that, right? To sort of tighten that sort of stuff up a little. Okay, just making sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, so like I said, you know, we didn't just throw a dart in the wall and hope it sticks. We went through several iterations, several different design options internally that originally we didn't present in this application and what you have in front of you. Like I said, the option to go as of right in the front of the property, we could do that, but, you know, we don't want to ruin the aesthetic of the house and the architecture. I don't think the original architect intended for the house to function like that. So we were very mindful of that. We didn't even do any drawings of it. Option two was the two-story, also labeled as alternate design number one in your packet. Again, we listened to the neighbors on that, and we nixed the two-story idea. Then we went to the...
Excuse me, what do you mean you listened to the neighbors on that? They didn't want a two-story or they thought it wouldn't be?
The two-story was too imposing on their yards.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't want to rock the boat in any way.
Oh, okay, good.
They had recommended a one-story addition instead with a privacy hedge along the property line. So that's, you know, where we kind of started from.
Are you referring to your back door, the back door neighbors?
Correct.
Okay, because we didn't, we don't have a letter from them, do we? We had a letter from 41, I think.
We don't. We have some text message correspondence indicating that that's their wish.
Okay, all right.
So then we did a little part. So the two-story addition required a rear yard as well as a coverage variance. Now that we reduced it down to one story and widened the footprint, now we need a side yard variance in addition to those other two variances. So it was kind of six to one, half dozen the other. And we also went as far as to variety with an alternative design number two, which takes that two-story and eliminates the office space above entirely. So we're just reduced down to a single-car garage with a mudroom, again, going back to just the rear yard and coverage variances. So, you know, we're willing to work with the board. We need this family room as a part of their lives, and we just want to reiterate the fact that we didn't come up with one option. We explored every avenue that we could.
Could you describe the project in a little more detail? Because you're talking about a family room, but what's really encroaching on the backyard, it looks like it's an office, I'm just reading, an office mudroom, which is in addition to the family room.
Correct. If you look at the floor plan here. Yep, there we go. So that bottom drawing is the proposed first floor plan. Yes, and the left side is the garage with the front access. In the back there is an office room. So that would be close proximity to the neighbor. That's the 9.7 in the rear. However, we're going to have that proposed row of arborvitae trees in the back, and there's also a six-foot, I believe it's six or six-and-a-half-foot-high fence that those neighbors recently erected there along the property line. So, and that was why we went down to the one-story, so that we wouldn't be too far over the height of the fence from a visual standpoint of the neighbor's yard.
But again, the need, that is an office space?
Correct. Yes, it's an office flex space. You know, if four kids have homework or, you know, mom or dad have work to do, that's a good multifunctional space.
So the feeling was, in addition to the sunroom, you needed, which could have also, could also be an office, you needed some additional office space.
The sunroom is more of like a cozy den. It's only 10 feet by 13 feet, roughly.
And talk a little bit about the garage. This is a one-car, two-car?
It's a one-car garage. Currently, they have a two-car garage, but we're willing to go down to a one-car garage. It's a, it's a, how wide is it? It's about, it's a comfortable one-car garage. I think it's the next best thing as opposed to a two-car garage. It's 16 feet wide.
When you refer to it as dead space, what exactly do you mean?
Dead space?
Yeah.
In the garage?
Yeah, in the application, you said it's dead space. It's not really suitable for entertaining or playing.
That sounds familiar. Can you explain that?
Yeah.
So we have a garage which runs the yard, which our kids basically use as a backyard. That's their big playing yard. They have a neighbor's farm, quite large, the big play space. We have the side yard, which is almost 12 feet overall. We have also a big play space. And then we have a very old patio, which is small, with a table. So when we have parties and we want to sit out in the back, we were kind of limited to this small patio, you know, the entire patio. And then this side is, there's a driveway and then a hedge fence and a separate ground patio. And I call it dead space because we kept playing. It's not near enough to entertain people. And I've brought our neighbor in the past two years, and we were trying to think of how we could really use our space more effectively. Everyone comes, but this is dead space. So I guess we're trying to pull that term off conversation with others. But they come to our yard, and my neighbors are surprised because we do have a lot of buildable space. It says on buildable, or...
And what is the increase in the patio? I mean, I don't know the existing, the size of the existing patio, but it looks like you're paving a good part of the back lawn. So let's talk a little bit about that.
Photo, existing photos of the house. You'll see the current patio is a concrete slab. It's just big enough for about right there, a table and chairs, and beyond that, you're standing in the grass. Hopefully, it didn't rain that day. But it's a very minimal patio. So the idea was to square off the back of the house from corner of house to corner of house and create this additional patio space that would function as not only dining, but also lounging, barbecuing area.
Can you talk, tell me what you're doing about permeable versus non-permeable surface? Because it looks like you're covering a lot of new surface with impermeable, you know, structures. And I know that in this area, it's flat over there, water is an issue and flooding is an issue.
Yep, yeah, good question. So we provided a preliminary stormwater design based on a total net impervious increase of 1,164 square feet. So in this design, we were proposing six Coltech 902 HD chambers, which are underground stormwater chambers that act as a system to mitigate the amount of runoff. So that's for this submission here. During the building department review, there's a very thorough third-party engineer who reviews the design for state regulations. And at that point, so we haven't done any test bits yet to determine the soil percolation rate. If this gets approved, that will be a part of the building department package. So we'll ensure that we do percolation tests, and we design a system capable of handling the net increase in impervious surfaces.
Is your patio, which is quite large, is that intended to be permeable?
No, no, it's concrete pavement. It's about 400 square feet, and the addition is about 400 square feet.
So total, it's about 850 square feet approximately, the size of the...
Plus the driveway addition comes out to 1,164.
Okay.
Taking into consideration removing some of the driveway, it's a give and take. The net is 1,164.
The owners of number 21, did you go over this plan with them?
I, 21, I spoke with first members, we spoke to them. I spoke to them in the fall. We reviewed our first plan to down to two stories. And as we mentioned, they asked us, because they understood our recoverspace, we were very gracious, but they asked if we could do it. And they, in that extension, they just, they, they walked from over there, and we thought, and I said, yes. You know, I was going to work with them. I realized they didn't want to start a fight, or we were, and I said, and then in the fall, I texted my supervisor, and he said, you were fine with it.
You mentioned that you also had that third alternative, which was just doing that one extension, like the one-car garage, turning the other thing into a family room.
Correct.
Is that just a backup plan, or is that some reason why you thought, is it just because you really wanted the more space of an office rather than just having, because then you wouldn't need the setback on the left side, right?
Correct, yeah.
And I think your neighbors at 41 don't have that setback problem, right? They just had the back setback, the rear yard setback, right? The one next door?
Correct.
Yeah.
Entire of your yard is a two-story addition.
Right.
So if they go on the side with the entire back.
Oh, it's the whole back?
It's the whole back, a two-story addition.
Okay. But so that other plan, you had that plan, the third plan, that was...
Yeah, so this is the two-story, Paul, if you go to the right.
Right.
All right, so here we go. This is the single-story without the office.
Mm-hmm. And how much would that change it square footage-wise?
It's about half.
Half. That's a lot different, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the floor plan there. You'll see just detached one-car garage with mudroom, transition space, and the family room. So the office is the bonus. This is sort of the minimum that we would need to function.
So let me just make sure I understand this. Drawing at the bottom, you've got the garage at the top of the drawing.
Correct.
So it's similar to the garage arrangement is 41. You pull it and you turn.
That's correct.
Right. And then you've got the mudroom, and then you've got the, and then the new family room.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the patio is the same size in both, in all of them, right?
Correct.
Right, right, great.
That's still one story.
This is still one story?
That's correct. Paul, if you want to go to the elevation of the...
That one out the window, okay.
Yeah, the first one was two, the last one...
All right, so if you look at the bottom right, this is being in the side yard, looking back at the house. You'll see the garage has the side entrance, 41.
Mm-hmm.
The window next to the garage is the mudroom.
Mm-hmm.
The two larger windows are the family room.
Right, right.
Oh, that's, Tom and I, that's the house. Chris. And what would be the setback requirements under that plan?
This would be a rear yard variance. The setback is 10.1 feet, and then also the coverage still.
Wait a minute. The backyard variance would be what? Because it's right now, you're asking for 9.7, correct?
Yes, it actually reduces it.
Two.
10.1 is the setback. I guess the variance would be 19.9.
Oh, okay.
It's a different one.
Yeah, it's slightly different.
Right.
Yeah.
The one with the garage, the other one...
They'd only need the one setback, not the one on the side, just this...
Right.
It's slightly different.
Everything is the same, except the garage is not the office, right? So you just take the garage off that?
That's right.
Right, yeah. If you look at the...
So it's alternate design two.
from this discussion, is what you are asking for in terms of a variance, especially the backyard, is very substantial. Now, I know in your application, that question, you addressed it. I don't think it was, I mean, that's one, I think the way we address it is the fact that you're asking for close to 70% reduction, it's 68%, by our standard, that's a very substantial, very substantial variance. And I don't think, based on my experience, we've seen anything like that before.
It's obviously subjective, okay? But, you know, it's not, because, and this is what I was speaking to before, because the neighbors have it, doesn't make it insubstantial.
Right.
So you are asking for a substantial variance. And in my view, and I don't know about the rest of the board, but certainly that's the case, yeah.
Because we're not evaluating alternative two, we're not evaluating any of the others. We're val, yeah.
No, no.
We're evaluating what they propose.
What they proposed, right? Because, you know, we don't have the measurements and so forth and the detailed plans. I mean, if they were to go with Plan C, they really would have to, right, Paul, would have to submit those to you for the measurements and so forth and so on, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
That factor does, though, go into, you know, you went very nice and thoroughly through the five things that we consider when we're thinking of variances. And one of those is, were there any alternatives? And it's, I'm glad you've shown us some alternatives you had, one that was bigger and maybe worse, and one that might be smaller and maybe more appealing to our board at least, right? And then one we're talking about today, I think we're all seeing it as pretty substantial. So when you say it's not, we kind of think it is. And when we look at that consideration, are there other possible ways to solve this? I think you've shown us that there are actually versus maybe not getting as much space as you would like, but at the same time, maybe something that's a little more satisfactory to us.
Well, it sounds like what you would be foregoing is the office space. Is that, is that correct?
That's really what it is, yeah.
That's basically what it is.
The other thing that comes up as in these discussions is a self-created thing, and I know that sounds like, of course, you didn't create a problem, but you bought a house, and this is what it was at the time. And everybody's thinking, I can make my house bigger, but, or maybe change it, but you have to go through this process, and not, sometimes it doesn't always, it's not as easy as it seems. We're trying to move in the direction of more open space and more green space, and even if 25 years ago or 10 years ago, they were less inclined, we're leaning more in that way now, trying to keep Bronxville a little less, bigger houses on smaller properties if possible, unless there's a really good reason, which is why we're here.
Mm-hmm.
Would you like to add a question?
You can, sure.
Sure, you're free to, yeah.
Sure.
And just as the homeowner, I would like to reiterate that we do take all these factors into consideration very highly ourselves, which is part of the reason we moved to Bronxville. We love the architecture. And as I mentioned in my letter, the house was in estate condition when we bought it. So we've gone through many years of renovating the house, and for us, we also value the green space, the original beauty of these houses. And we really try to maintain that while also giving what our family, which is on the larger side, but even a family with two kids would really, it just improves the house. Right now, we go from the garage straight into the kitchen. There's no drop zone. There really is no transition in the house. So the last option that Andrew presented, it just, you know, we have to have the garage. And we can also, I've done so many walks around the neighborhood, we can do a detached garage, and we could do it in exactly the same spot. The visual effect is the same, but the difference for us is our kids can go in and out through the house, through the garage door, and it creates that, that level of security for us. So I think we've been pretty mindful of everything, and I hope you guys will agree. Any other questions for me?
You're saying you could do a detached garage?
Mm-hmm. And that would be 10 feet from the property line, I believe that's within our zoning rights.
Detached, yeah. 15 feet, yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
What's the difference?
It'd be a breezeway or something.
Did you give that thought?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's always our fallback if none of this works out. But like I said, the lack of, the convenience and the lack of space we're giving up by having it attached, and it is the same difference to the neighbors. It adds a lot to us.
Right. Mm-hmm. Right. Any further? Is there anyone from the public here who would like to, any comment? Charlie, anything else from your end?
Nope.
Okay, so you have...
I'm just saying that it's so hard for me to visualize the little...
Right.
It is hard.
That's why we go and walk the property.
We walked over there.
We walked over there, we checked out the property, yeah.
All right, so, look, I think you're catching our vibe here. So we really, there are kind of two options. We can vote on this, right, at today's hearing, or you can, if you want, pull the application and go back and consider your plans and come back. Now, the advantage of doing that is, right, Paul, they don't have, they don't have another filing fee, what are some of the, right?
Yeah, what they could do is adjourn, adjourn it until possibly the next meeting with revisions, you know, based on your feedback. And then, you know, you would have all that information.
It would be an amended application, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a new application.
They can amend this.
Versus a new application.
Correct, they can just amend this, amend it, and...
Right.
You know, submit all the pertinent information that we need, and, you know, review that more fully in the next meeting.
And our next meeting is, well, we meet monthly, right?
Yeah.
Except for August, okay, so... I'm just throwing that out as something if you want to consider or think about, or...
I don't understand the benefit of doing that. Could you explain that?
Well, you don't have, you would be, you would be basically pulling your application, and then you would be amending it and coming back. So for example, they don't, you don't have the additional filing fees, is that correct, Paul?
Right, you would resubmit with, like, the alternate number two, with all of that information, including, you know, all of the calculations and whatnot.
Yeah, we would like to be adjourned to listen. Any comments on alternate design two, appropriated for next month's meeting?
I will give you some general feedback, if that's okay. My, listen, my personal feeling, and I believe the feeling of the board here, is that your desire to maintain the original house is commendable. I think that's terrific. I think it would be somewhat odd if you came out of the front, which you can do as of right. But this board is, or I, really feel like we need to strike a balance between giving people what they need in order to update, modernize their houses, but also, you know, considering overdevelopment of the community. I mean, lots of times, we've seen this many, many years in my 10 years on this board, people come in and they want to make a bigger house. That's immediately, that's the knee-jerk reaction. But if we do that, and if the house turns over two or three times, and the house becomes bigger and bigger and bigger, then we become a community of townhouses, or we become a city. And my personal feeling is that we need to, while valuing the neighbors' rights to have their homes updated, we need to, we need to consider open space for lots of different reasons, for sightlines, for greenery, for drainage, as we've talked about. So my personal view is that I would like to vote for a variance for you, but I don't think I could vote for this particular variance. I think, in my view, it would have to be somewhat smaller.
Are you talking about from the rear setback?
Well, I'm not talking about any specifics. I'm just saying we would, we would, to me, I think it should be a smaller variance that's requested, but still in keeping with what your family needs. I mean, you've got four children, so your house is, it's not a small house, but it's a small house given, as you've said, given the way the neighborhood is, you know, laid out. So, you know, you've got a smart architect here, put him to work.
I guess I'm not, I'm not following as the homeowner, why looking at what the neighborhood has is not relevant to us.
We're deciding this in a vacuum. This is, you're looking for a zoning variance for your own particular house. Every, every house has its own unique quirks and whatever. And the other thing is, as I said earlier, is that one of these variances that was being discussed was 50 years ago, okay? And there were a lot of, you know, different elements 50 years ago, and one was 13 years ago. So, you know, and our code has recently changed.
Right.
So, I mean, that's for what it's worth.
You presented two alternatives, and I think the second alternative is smaller. It fulfills your needs. I agree that it's nice to have an attached garage, you can come to the mudroom, especially with kids, you don't, you know. So that's what I think we're sort of indicating you should pursue.
Even if you tweak that somehow in a way that works for you, versus having, we only require one setback, two, not two, which will automatically lessen the variance.
It would also reduce the building coverage, variance, right, Paul? I mean, obviously.
Well, yeah, of course, yeah, by half.
So you're, you're getting rid of one variance and reducing another.
Yeah.
And we can't agree on that without resubmitting it?
We can't, we can't modify it.
We can't do it, can't do it on the fly.
We can't do it at this meeting because you need, the calculations and all the details need to be provided, so that's why we're saying pull it, provide those, and we'll talk about it next month if that works.
Understood.
So that's why I said the advantage was not to have us vote tonight. If we voted tonight and you happened to be turned down, you have to resubmit and start all over, versus if we don't vote, you can get in next month with your new plan and just go ahead.
And you feel positive about the new plan?
Well...
Well, you know...
We feel that we want to give you something.
Well, you've got, I will say you've got most of the board here, one of our board members is not, not here, he's actually the vice chairman, but you've got a...
You're better off.
You've got five, five out of, you've got five out of seven.
And is there anything else you would like to see us submit other than the recalculations? Is there anything else that would be compelling?
Yes. Personally, talking about space, I would love to see a patio that is of somewhat permeable substance. In other words, if you have pavers with grass in between, or something like that. We talked about that on Saturday when we were there.
Or just smaller.
Because that's, that's a big thing. I lived in that general area for 18 years, and we had, we one time had ducks flying south for the winter, landing on the pond in our backyard on Sherman Avenue, because it was flooded constantly. And so that's, that's an issue, that's an issue. And you have people installing illegal pumps and all of that sort of thing, and...
Because essentially what you're doing is you're paving over that large part of lawn.
Yeah.
And that's a sore point with this board. So to Charlie's point, if you could think about, you know, making it permeable.
And you might find it's more attractive.
More attractive, you know.
Paul, is there a difference between permeable surface and then having the coltex? Like, are they interchangeable from like a drainage perspective?
Well, you're talking about stormwater management, both of which accomplish that, but a semi-permeable surface, you know, isn't, isn't considered for stormwater the same ratio as impermeable. So, you know, when we're figuring out the stormwater calculations for how many coltex or, you know, drywells they need, that goes into the calculation. And I'm not sure exactly for the stormwater plan that he has, but most of the residents have been really good about maybe putting in a little extra capacity. A, in the event they want to add a little more impermeable space, but also to help the neighbors, so that, you know, if it's going downhill, they can take care of it on their property a little better in these more harsh storms. So, you know, that's, that's always nice to see as well.
Regardless of the material that they may choose to use, isn't it more important about the drainage itself?
The stormwater runoff, yeah, the drainage.
As long as they have a drainage system, to me, regardless of how the patio is, what materials they use, what difference does it make?
Well, practically speaking, if it's permeable, it helps, right?
Well, not if, but the important issue is the drainage system. If that takes care, I don't see why that would be an issue.
I think, Mr. Brown, it's probably six of one and a half dozen of the other, because technically what they could do is use the semi-permeable space as part of their stormwater runoff, so that you didn't, you wouldn't have to put in as many coltex. You know, so, or, you know, if, if, you know, a resident was willing to have overcapacity, then that, that helps take a lot of that out of the equation nicely, actually. You know, because when we go into a house for permits, we are looking for, you know, illicit discharges where some pumps hooked to the sewer, which those need to come out. We are finding a lot of those, and then the question is, what do you do with that if they don't have anything? So, you know, those are all the things, we're looking at it quite seriously and at some great depth on all of these, and, you know, making sure that not only is the new work covered, but, you know, is the existing work working as it was, appeared to be designed to be working? And if not, then, you know, that's where the overcapacity for a new system falls in line, that they can use a new system for some of the old work that's there.
Okay, anything else from, so... Adjourned. Okay. Hopefully, maybe see you next month. Okay. All right, thank you, thanks so much. Okay, so let's turn to our second application. This is an appeal concerning 150, well, from the residents of 111 White Plains Road. Okay. Who will be presenting? Okay, and if you could speak into the mic, that would be terrific.
I have a spinal tissue story I have to sit down on.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this something new? Yes, it is.
Yeah, it looks like it. Thank you.
That's an outline, okay.
Can you hear me all right? Okay.
Yeah.
This should just be a very simple case. The only thing we're seeking for the building inspector to do is enforce the very building permit that he issued. On January 6th, 2022, he rejected an application for a fence, an overheight fence, in the neighbor, between our house and 115 White Plains Road. The next day, he issued a modified permit that had height and other conditions. Height was, condition was that the fence combined with the wall on which the fence sits should not exceed six and a half feet. Yet, one week later, the contractor began building the fence without any attention to the limits, the conditions. The owners sought a variance to permit the illegally built fence to stand, and this body nearly a year ago denied a variance on the south side. The north side had the problem of not being half-solid, but it did not have the problem of sitting on a wall. So we were surprised that the building inspector did not enforce the permit and simply compel removal or compliance. Now, he's interpreted the code to permit him to waive a building, a permit condition without either an amendment of the application, which we've heard about already tonight, or a variance. He does this by interpreting Section 31025, non-conforming buildings and uses to apply defenses. It doesn't. So my complaint is nothing more than enforcement of the terms of the permit. And it shows, and my memorandum shows, that there's no basis in law for the building inspector's interpretation. And it also refutes his belated contention that my complaint is time barred. Now, it is his duty under 1128 to enforce all laws, rules, regulations applicable to plans, specifications, and permits. The charge of the Bronxville Comprehensive Plan is to retain the pedestrian scale of buildings, streets, and open spaces that currently exist. The fence that's been built is nine feet high, not in all places, but at one point, and it basically runs between eight and nine feet. That's two and a half feet higher than Bronxville allows. It's three and a half feet higher than either my wife, our tall. It's five feet higher than the maximum allowed for front yard fences in Eastchester, Mount Vernon, Tuckahoe, Yonkers, and in most of Westchester. We like to think we're stricter in Bronxville, but in this, we're much easier. And it's all the more frustrating because the owners have never given any reason why they need a nine-foot fence. That's one foot short of a spite fence. It's not a spite fence, but, well, so I have here, you see their January 6th application for a fence permit, and Mr. Taft responded with an email to their architect, "The fence permit will need to be referred to ZBA, fence higher than six feet, six. Please let know how you proceed." Well, they moved very quickly. The next day, they modified the application from eight feet four to six. And the application says on the back, "Maximum combined height of fence and retaining wall may not exceed six and a half feet." Well, that seems pretty clear. Nevertheless, a week later, they began building on the north side, and within two weeks, they built a nine-foot fence on the south side. This picture here is of the fence next to our garage, and I've put up the heights that correspond. The fence is coming from the back at six and a half feet, which is allowed, and it, instead of staying at that level, it bumps up. Well, you can see on the right there how it's sitting on top of a wall, and that doesn't. Well, the next phase, now I've shrunk, I used to be 5'8" or 5'10", but my spinal condition makes me 5'3". You can see it's three and a half feet taller than us. This is not a pedestrian scale that we expect in Bronxville. They did not seek an amendment. They did seek a variance, the variance was denied. Now, I note in the memo that there was some question as to what variance they were seeking, whether it was just for the half-open or for the height as well. I had thought at the time it was height, but in either case, no variance for height was issued, whether it was on there or not. And any discussion that took place then is not applicable, because the rules of this body prescribed by the state are very clear, that you have to be clear as to what you decide. And whatever you cited, you did not grant a variance for the south side. It says quite explicitly, it's hard to read here, "The above requested variance is denied by a vote of none in favor and five against for the south side portion of the fence." Now, belatedly, I would say belatedly, the building inspector has decided, well, he wrote that back in... well, he wrote that back in January 7th, that they had to do this, but now he's decided he doesn't have to. And his reason for saying it doesn't have to is, to be fair, a good faith, but incorrect understanding of what nonconforming means in the code. It does not mean that something's allowed to stand and can be recreated forever and ever. It's when the law changes, we're not going to make people tear down what was lawful. Our house is on a nonconforming lot. It's 10,000 square feet. It was conforming in 1947, but now it's not. But, 31025, the nonconforming provision, first of all, only applies to buildings. A fence is not a building. It also applies to accessory buildings, but there are things like sheds and child's things and garages, so it's still a building, it needs a roof. A fence is not a building. But even if it were, the nonconforming assumes that there was previously a fence there that was at some time lawful. Well, there was a fence there before, but it wasn't lawful either. It was unlawful when built in 1997, because there had been no change in law since then or before. It was, again, it was eight and a half, nine feet tall.
Just a question, can, just jump in for a question here. So, when the fence was built in the 90s, it was approved by the village. Did it require a variance?
No, they did not. They issued a permit, they didn't serve me with any notice, the permit cost $24. They went ahead and built it.
So, at that point, the building inspector, who was different.
Mr. PC was.
Mr. PC felt it was conforming and, and approved it.
I'm sorry?
So, he decided it was conforming, and he approved, he provided a permit to build that fence.
No, it was not conforming.
Sorry?
Built in error.
No, my question.
What happened, the issue here is the fence sits on a wall. And the way it was presented to him was, well, it was okay before the wall, and it was okay after the wall, because the wall didn't count.
Who owns the wall? Who owns the wall?
Ah, that's why I, I didn't realize it then. I thought it was the boundary line. In fact, the next door neighbor, 115, owns the wall. So, when it was built, I thought it was on our property. But now, the face of their property extends past the wall. So, it could, it makes a nine foot together.
It's a retaining wall, correct?
Yes. I noticed you were interested in retaining walls.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have one, I had to rebuild part of it. What if it were a hill?
Beg your pardon?
What if it were just a slope?
I'm sorry?
What if it were a hill, not a wall, and it was just the grade of the land, and the house, and the fence was built on that? Like, is that?
Well, then, then, one of, when they, they sought to build a garage there, and their problem was, they said that in the back there, there was such a steep incline. So, actually, it is a gradual slope, so that at the very front of, towards the front of the lot, sitting on the wall, it's not nine feet, but it's, it's deeper back there. But you can see from the picture here, you can see how it's going up. The picture shows that if it just continued, I mean, that, that would be, if the fence, as in the backyard, were to continue into the front, you know, it wouldn't go up like that. But it goes up like that, because it jumps. I actually have a picture from their contractor showing how they know how to make those things work together. In other words, they do, they just take into account the, the wall, and the fence becomes shorter at that.
Yeah, but let me, I want to go back to my original point, because I'm still not clear on this.
Sorry?
So, Vince decided in 1999, this, this fence was built then.
Yes.
He made the determination, it was within code.
I don't believe.
Let me just finish.
But that's the determination he made.
He, determination he made, it did not come before the zoning board.
No, that's correct, it did not.
That, that's correct.
Yes.
And were you living there at that time?
We were living there at the time.
So, did you raise your hand back then?
We did not, and there were several reasons we did not. The first was, we were building our own addition at the same time. The second was, we wanted to be good neighbors. The third was, we didn't know until it happened. It was, we came, woke up one morning, and there it was. But the most important thing Mr. Jockno brought is, I actually thought we owned the retaining wall, or we, it was split between us. And so, if it was split between us, then it's not.
But you had 24 years to make that determination. I said, this is what I don't quite under, understand.
Well, I'll tell, the reason we were able, I was very frustrated when it first happened. I did not like it. It also was a dark brown stained wall, but more importantly, at that time, our children were just growing and living up. I had other things to worry about. When our neighbors decided they wanted to put a garage there, I became, became more concerned. But, let me finish a second. But most importantly, I found out where the property line was when I came out. They didn't give anything to us, but when I came out, and their surveyor was there, and I said to him, "Well, where is the property line here?" And he said, "It's in front of the wall." So, now you have a quick question, if you have a wall and a fence, now, if you treat them separately, you could have 13 feet high. But no, they should be combined. And that's what Mr. Taft said, in effect, when he denied the application the first time around. So, if you want to say you can have a wall and a fence, but you can see here from the picture that the fence is on top of the wall.
Well, let, let, let me ask.
Yes.
Take this in a different direction. First of all, I was very impressed with your brief. I, I, I'm a lawyer, I learned a lot from it, it's very thorough and well-written and, and.
Thank you very much.
Well-sourced, you used a lot of legal, and, and I learned a lot from it, so.
I did, I agree.
But leaving that aside for the moment, my question really is, because I went over to the Rosses, sorry, Ms. Ross, you weren't there, but I was trespassing on your property. And I walked up to the fence in question, and, and the lawn went up to the fence, and I measured the fence, and it was six feet six. And so, I, I mean, I guess it's a matter of perspective, which side of the fence, which side are you measuring the fence from?
We've heard this many times. Mrs. Ross has said quite right, "Oh, it looks just great," from their side. I have the picture in the extended memorandum, showing the difference between their side and our side.
But it's also a six-foot fence from their side.
Right. It's, it's, it's a conforming fence from their side.
Yes, but the limit on the height is, once it goes over, is relative to us as a neighbor. So, if it's over six and a half feet, now, you're saying
What if it was there?
They can build a fence on top of a wall, and it doesn't matter?
Well, they didn't build a fence on top of the wall, from what I can tell from their side. They built it as an extension of their property. I think we're arguing semantics.
Well, if, did you look at it from our side?
Is it on your property?
I mean, there's a picture here that shows quite clearly.
Yeah, I, well. Okay, but that fence is also the solid fence, and that's been changed, too.
Well, no, that, well, this is still solid, that part. And I note in my memorandum that they had dealt with the half-solid portion after I made.
Yeah, and that's what I saw.
I did not pursue that complaint.
Yeah.
But the, the basic question you're asking, you're saying, well, first of all, I should say, even if I didn't do anything at all, that doesn't change the legality of it. There, the decision of Mr. PC is not one that has a continuing value, especially after the fence has rotted. At that point, throughout Westchester, you can't replace a nonconforming product with another nonconforming.
Wait, can I, let me just ask a question. Paul, this is a question for you. Okay, so Vince decided this was a conforming fence. Fast forward to 2022, the decision was taken to take it down and replace it. Now, per the code, it's, they have to replace it same height, right? If you're going to replace it, and therefore, you don't need a variance. So, did they replace the old fence with the same, is it the same height?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And that's why there was no need to come back or, or come to the zoning board for a variance?
Correct. That is a mistake as to the understanding of what the nonconforming provision is intended. And if you look, and I cite to, I think it's one other thing, the nonconforming provision does not permit replacement, it only permits repair where you have it. Now, I say, first of all, it doesn't apply to fences at all in Bronxville. But everywhere you look in Westchester, and I've done a survey, and I'll give you a copy of my survey, that shows that when you take down a nonconforming structure, if, or, when, when you repair it, it varies, but from 25 to 50%, you have to provide a conforming structure. You no longer get the benefit of the nonconforming. So, what, Mr., and this is very important for you to decide, not just from me, but because there'll be, this is a fence, you know, we're not talking about a few thousand dollars. But if the building department goes on and says, "Well, it's nonconforming, but we'll allow replacement," that changes things quite a bit. And I question whether you want to do that. And I can assure you that that is not done in 90, forty-some municipalities in Westchester. You could decide to change the rules, or you could decide to change the rules as to how the fence and a wall are to be combined together. But this is not the case where you should be, this is the case where Mr. Taft has issued a building permit that required it to be combined, and it has not been. And it leads to a fence that's nine feet high, three and a half feet taller than I am, and in a Westchester where four feet is the usual limit. It's almost, it's twice what's allowed. I mean, if we want to be a village that people copy, nobody's copying what we're doing with fences.
Okay, so let's open it up, Paul, your.
May I ask the applicant, you're referring to 31025B? Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
That, so, 31025B, correct me if I'm wrong, counsel, is when there's a nonconforming use. So, it's not a nonconforming use, it's a conforming use. So, that doesn't apply to what we're talking about. 31025C does, in fact, apply to the building, which a fence, I have interpreted for several years now, if not since I've been here, that a fence is included, if you go down through the definitions of building, accessory building, structure, and accessory structure, they all, they all are considered, in my mind, a building.
Thank you.
No, I didn't.
Well, I, what we did back.
Yeah, I can see it does.
Dealing with the application months ago, we walked.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I spoke with the neighbors when it came up, and they were very positive. And I, the, it was much more open. And they were trying to have ivy go up. They were very sorry about anything that might impact on us, so we had more conversation about it. And I'll give it to them, because we were, you know, that's just a, they, they were a lot of having to put
Well, my, my, my only point is, I, I reviewed the permit carefully, and it didn't say anything about which side the fence would be measured on. I walked over, and I measured the fence, and it was exactly, you know, what the side, on that side. So, arguably, it, it, my point is that it's not nonconforming for the lawyers in the room as a matter of law. It's nonconforming as a matter of argument, based on, you know, measuring the fence from your side
Yes, from the top.
Of the fence.
From the retaining wall.
Yeah.
And the fence on top of it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand that.
No, it's not, it's just, that's what always was the confusion, because of.
And it's still confusing.
Yeah, yeah, it's simply from our side, it's really, really high.
And so, I don't know how we can overrule. I don't know how we can overrule Mr. Taft when there's no clarity on this issue. That's really my question, my, my issue.
If the permit as issued expresses exactly what we seek, which is it's not more than six and a half feet on our side.
Well, it doesn't say on your side.
Well, no, it just said, well.
That's my point.
Well, so, in general, in fences, it's usual to provide that the side that is facing the neighbor is more beneficial than neighbor. So, you're saying you could have a, they could have a six and a half foot retaining wall, and then a six and a half foot fence on top of that? That doesn't make any sense. Now, I would like to point out.
Retaining wall is yours, right? The retaining wall is on your property, you said?
No, it's not. That's what, that was the big change. I had thought before it was.
Oh, I see, okay.
And when I realized it wasn't, I said, "You're not going to allow a 13-foot combined retaining wall fence, are you?"
But it's, it's on grade with their property, right?
What?
That retaining wall, if you removed the retaining wall, just left a hill, right, and you built a fence, then what's the argument there, right?
Well, but if you look at the picture.
Can we open it to the public, please?
The neighbor, they're the neighbor's, it's her house.
Mrs. Ross, we've seen you before.
Yes.
Ms. Ross, could you please speak, speak into the mic, just?
Absolutely.
Mrs. Miz, you tell.
Mrs. Miz, my husband is not here tonight. So, I just want to clarify one thing. I know there's been discussion of, on Mr. Maxxiner's side of the, of the property, whether it's on the retaining wall or not. Actually, I believe I sent pictures to Mr. Taft of this, and I have them here, but I don't have printout, so I have it on my computer, so I have my computer.
That's okay. We take your word for it.
Okay, and there were actually, and you actually can see it in December 8th, 2021 submission, because we've been before you guys a few times, from Mr. Maxxiner. There used to be really large trees that Mr. Maxxiner asked to cut down. We were okay with that, that were on our property, because they were dying. But those tree stumps are still there, and you can see them in the pictures that Mr. Taft, I sent to Mr. Taft. That's where the retaining wall is. And you can also see in our land survey, the fence is set off of our property line, which, as Mr. Maxxiner just said, is where the retaining wall is, by two and a half feet, I believe, if I'm remembering from the land survey correctly. And you can see that borne out by the existence of those really large stumps that are still there. So, I disagree with the notion that this is on the retaining wall. And to, is it jacked, no, I apologize if I'm saying wrong. To your point, if, and I raised this with Paul, I don't think that this is a retaining wall for, especially not the, the full length of this. What Mr. Maxxiner has presented is a picture of where the stairs are, because our, if you, if you were to look on the other side of that picture, that's where our door is. So, it is a grade. But the fence is not sitting on top of that wall, it's sitting back behind it, and that's, really, you can see that the most from the pictures of the, where the stump is. So, by the time you get past where the stairs are, it's really, I think, I would call it more of a garden wall than a retaining wall, because it is just this sloped down, and then there's kind of like rocks that used to be, maybe they used to retain something, but now it's a slope.
Retaining your property from falling into Mr. Maxxiner's property.
Well, either way, it's not sitting on the wall, so nothing.
It didn't give me the, I did not get the impression that it was sitting on a wall. That was, that, that's really the whole point that I'm trying to make. I walked out on, on, on their lawn, and there was a fence. It was, it was driven, wall pull, I have a wall pull fence. It was, it, it, the, the stakes were in, looked like they were in the lawn. They were not attached to a wall, so that's. And it was on grade, too, I mean, it was.
Yeah, and I, and I also visited the property, trespassed on your property, apologies. And, same thing, it was sort of, the wall is built into the ground, it's, it's your retaining wall. And maybe in this picture, there's a little, some stones at the end, but I came to the same conclusion.
But I just want to explain why that's the case, because we were before this board in April of last year, so almost a year ago today, about this fence issue, which is what the, the solid photo was right now.
And that was the issue.
Right, well, it's part of the issue, and actually, there's a transcript from that. I mean, I listened to it earlier today, and the board, I don't know which member was, is male member, said, "Paul, just a question for you, because one of the complaints is the height, but per the code, we just want to be clear that it does meet code. It's six and a half feet on the applicant's side. The fact that it slopes down is not relevant to that." And Mr. Taft's response, in part, was, it was hard to hear, frankly, was, quote, "What I have determined historically, since I have been here, is that if it's set back from the wall, then it would not be cumulative." And we took that to heart, and I believe at the end, we did have an attorney at the time, I'm an attorney myself, so I'm disappearing here. I'm an attorney myself, so I'm disappearing here by myself today. But our attorney at the end did ask that again. And so when we went to go actually replace the fence, we did make sure with the wall pole folks that we were drilling into the dirt and not into a retaining wall or stone for that very reason, because we wanted to make sure that this was not an issue. So we're quite surprised to hear this came back up again. So I just wanted to clarify our position on where the fence sits.
So you proceeded in good faith?
Thank you.
And you, you did work in reliance on what you were told by the board?
Exactly.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
I did, I did recall that conversation as well, so.
And I raised the height, and I was very confused about why we were pursuing it. On the broadside, it is directly on the wall. And it's, so when you get to the end of the fence, then you can argue about, but it's still, it's still very, very high. But it definitely is on the wall, on the side of the white line.
Part of it, Tom.
But let me just.
No, it's, well, I mean, it's, it's, what is it, five different.
Panels, yeah.
I would like.
But I think it's safe to say that, that terrain is the same as it was in 1999.
Oh, yes, that's true.
Nothing, nothing has changed. The building inspector back then came, the same determination as this building inspector.
You've raised three issues. First of all, I would like to talk about the fairness of presentation. When I made the complaint, I explicitly stated in the complaint, and you will see that at the bottom of the complaint that's copied there, if you have any other reason that this is okay other than as a nonconforming use, please tell me what it is. I then filed the appeal, gave an extensive discussion of that. And then the building department came back and said, well, didn't address that at all. It said, well, you're too light. It said nothing about this distance issue. Now, that is a real issue of being, if, if you want to decide this distance issue, this is not the format to do it. We should then have a special meeting on that. And I say that because, much to my surprise, it seems to be the assumption, well, if it's 36 inches, 30 inches back, it's not counting together. And I would say, first of all, exactly where the retaining wall is, is not all that clear. But it, for example, in Bedford, and this, I've surveyed. We, we have nothing in our code that says what to do about retaining walls and, and fences together. But in Bedford, it says, no fence shall be located or constructed on a terrace or wall that result in having an overall height more than permitted, unless such fence shall be located at least 10 feet back from that terrace or wall. So, and we say, anything over six and a half feet within the setback is subject to being a building. Now, it seems to me, you would not say a wall plus a fence can be 13 feet. And if you look throughout, exactly how that distance is treated varies depending upon which jurisdiction you're in. Some don't treat it at all. Some say, of course, you combine the two together without thinking about it. In White Plains, for example, the building department says, of course, you put the two together. And others have variations, how many feet it must be within it. But no matter how you slice it or dice it, you have a situation here where you have a fence either on the wall or immediately behind it. And it presents us with a nine-foot wall in a community that wants to be attractive. Well, look at the last picture here. This is a picture of the building department, which primary function is assist all residents through the construction process. You won't see a fence here. We already allow fences at six and a half feet. They're two and a half feet higher than 80 percent of the communities in Westchester. I can give you a list of that, with citing to the provision. Four feet is the usual. And every one of our community neighbors.
Okay, I think.
The code says six and a half. We're not changing the code now.
Okay. Thank you. I assume you're, you're done.
I urge you to read my memo in detail. It addresses, and to the extent you want to talk about combining the two, I will provide you with a memo on that very subject. I did not, because I thought it was off the table. And suddenly, after the permit's issued, and it's not about, I specifically ask, is there another reason?
So let me ask the question. Are you also addressing this statute of limitation issue?
I have eight pages on that.
Okay, so I guess we need to address that, too. Sorry, guys.
I don't know that we do.
Or unless we can just, maybe we just decide this one would be sufficient. James?
Yeah, we may, right.
May I, may I say one thing?
Yeah, wait, excuse me, let me just ask. Just, you know, in, in terms of procedure here, okay. The applicant has brought up this case about the fence. We could maybe vote on that now, or do, or we have another issue on the table? So you have both applications, you have two appeals before you. One on the statute of limitations and one on the underlying question of the height of the fence. So I think you certainly should make a decision or direct the drafting of a decision on the statute of limitations issue.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Stock. If we vote on the fence issue, doesn't the statute of limitations issue become moot?
It, it may, first of all, I don't know how you're going to vote. But, but let's, assuming you would vote, assuming that you would vote on the, on the fence issue and determine that the fence was zoning complaint.
Right.
Right? And the question becomes, do you need to vote on the statute of limitations issue? Well, you have two, you have two dis, applications before you.
Okay.
Your decision on the substance of the fence could be appealed. And then if you hadn't decided the statute of limitations decision, you'd be, it, you know, you'd be left, I think, I think the statute of limitations issue certainly should be decided. Okay. Good. Thank you, thank you, Jim. All right. Let's talk about the. You do have the authority. You are, your review is de novo. So you do have the authority to decide the fence issue, even on a different, even on a different argument, or even on a, a different reasoning than the building inspector decided it, if you so choose.
Right.
Okay. You're, you're doing a de novo review now of the fence, as if you are the building inspector.
Okay.
I have hearing problems, so I didn't quite fully understand all of that.
Second, second.
But I would like to say on the statute of limitations issue, two things. One, my memorandum discusses that at great length and gives half a dozen different reasons. But I think what I put on the presentation here says it in basic principle. It's a decision of the New York Court of Appeals. So not just a Supreme Court or appellate division. But one who demands revocation of a permit issued to another is in no position to appeal, or at least should not be required to take his appeal until his denam, demand for revocation has been rejected with some formality and finality. The time limit does not begin to run against one who seeks revocation of a permit until his objections have been overruled in a decision of which he's had notice. My memorandum shows that there is no such decision here, and that it is. I, my own feeling is, Mr. Taft realized he had a loser on the no, nonconformity issue, so he came up with this. He originally tried to prevent us from even presenting this. But if you read that, that memorandum, and it is in great detail, I do not think, I do not see how you can concede you can find against it. I would suggest, we have here two significant issues that seem to be up in the air, and I would suggest that you not decide either of them tonight until you have read the memorandums that I've submitted. And now that you've raised a new issue of whether the fence and the wall should be combined or not, to allow me to brief that issue as well. We've waited a year and three months for this already. Another month or two won't bother us.
Just, let's go back to the statute of limitations. So essentially, what you're saying is that the statute of limitations should be told.
No, no, I'm not saying it's told. There was no occasion.
No, but that's what I'm saying, until you actually were on notice.
Well, it's, if, I, I would rather not try to.
Not quite sure what you're saying.
Summarize very exactly, because there's several different reasons. The main idea is there was no action of which I was required to be noticed or notified or taken. Maybe I was not notified.
And you weren't notified.
So I didn't know about the 1999 decision. I didn't know about this. After speaking with Ross's office, I didn't understand why they were so reluctant.
Well, let me just jump in here, because I'm confused. In the, in the application, there is a denial that Mr. Taft sent you last spring on, on this whole issue, correct?
I didn't understand the question.
I'm just saying, I believe in the application that Mr. Taft sent you a. What's that?
Your application.
No, the, the, yeah, your, your, your application for an appeal back in the spring, Mr. Taft sent you a denial of that, correct? Saying, just saying that the.
No, 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 but your application is based on.
You're based on.
A denial that was sent to you, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, I understand. Well, I don't, I don't understand the question because last spring, when they, well, last January, in January, they built a fence that was over there.
Right.
And we asked, does something be done about that? And he wrote them that they could either take it down or seek, seek a.
Various.
And he then, he then filed a second application, which was, they didn't serve the application on us, as they were required to do. And he turned that down. And they used that as their basis for an appeal here. That appeal specifically was limited, in their papers, to the half-solid issue. He called them, but not us, it was his impression, his feeling, that this was satisfied with a nonconforming vision. But we weren't told that. I didn't learn that he took that view until July of last year. When he took that view, I then made my complaint within a few weeks. But I didn't appeal to you because there was no decision that would meet the standards for running for the statute of limitations.
But it's all in the public record.
May I respond to that, please?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So just to be clear, in April of last year, we were all here, all of us. We're sitting here.
Yeah.
And this board, Mr. Maxsiner's attorney raised the issue. It's a matter of public record, it's on a recording. I listened to it today. And he raised, his atti, may I finish, Mr. Maxsiner? You have called my home, I-95, you have called my home, Sing Sing Prison. So may I just get my words out, if that's all right? You did, I have the email, I have an email for it.
Yep.
So just to be clear, in April of 2022, Mr. Maxsiner, with his attorney, appeared before this board and made the argument that we had an eight and a half or nine-foot fence.
Exactly.
And therefore, Mr. Maxsiner cannot possibly say he was not unnoticed as of April of 2022, that there was a height issue that he raised himself, and that this board, as a matter of public record, considered. And Mr. Taft weighed in on, at the time, before this very group of people that were all sitting here today. So I would really ask that the court, excuse me, I'm so.
We've got all night here.
That the board can just make a decision on this now. This has been, I mean, this has truly been, like, just killing me, that this keeps just dragging on and on and on. And to my point before, yes, Mr. Maxsiner sent me an email and said that the, that the fence, and I have it right here, reminded him of something that's more provocative, Sing Sing Prison and I-95. And it's actually in his application, I believe, he said something similar in that. And also included pictures of things like the January 6 protests. So I'm tired of having my home compared to such negative things all the time. I would really like to just get on with living my life.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Chairman?
Yes, Paul, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to, if I may, go over the timeline of submissions.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will, sure.
May I speak? May I speak?
We're interested in the timeline, Paul, but this.
Yeah, thank you, Paul, please.
I'm talking, please, please address the chairman, okay?
Thank you, Paul, go ahead.
May I speak? Okay. So there was an original fence permit that, an application was submitted December 21 of 2021. The permit was issued January 7 of 2022. And then after there was some notice that the fence for the half-open or any other issues came to light, what we had the applicant do is to resubmit a new permit, and the old one was withdrawn. That application was submitted to our office on March 4 of 2022. A denial letter associated with that permit was issued to the applicant that same day. And then they went and produced a ZBA application on March 21 of 2022. We had a ZBA meeting on, on April 26 of 2022, with a decision rendered April 29, 2022. And then I did receive, or I, I did send a email to, to James on 7/14/2022. And in that email, I had a statement that the height was not an issue. And that was 75 days after the ZBA meeting. Where, or actually, it was 75 days from the decision.
And the statute is 68? 60.
Yes. Thank you.
That's when he sent the notice, when I got that notice in July, that's been two weeks. Now, Mrs. Ross has talked about a record. I have asked repeatedly of the building department for a record at that meeting, and there is none, or at least I was told there is none. And the video that was supposed to have been made was exceptionally not made, and that there was no trace. I asked repeatedly, and that was the answer that I got. But even if I had directed, the fact that your board discussed this does not seem to me, as a lawyer, a basis for your.
Being able to say, we decided the issue. And I think if you go back and look at the state provisions regarding the activities of the zoning board, you, there are strict requirements about what you have to do and indicate the votes for specific issues. And none of those things took place.
Well, they took place, they may not have taken place that night, but it was.
Yeah, I think, why don't we, I think.
Your decision was strictly denied.
Yeah, I think at this point, we've had enough information. Question, anyone on this committee have any more questions?
Well, what I would like to ask.
Mrs. Maxsiner.
Oh, Miss, sorry, you would like to say something? Sorry.
All right, so I just want to say that it was my impression of the email that Jim sent, that he was not comparing the Ross's lovely yard with their beautiful trees to bed any type of prison. But it's the way that our backyard looks now that it is completely fenced, because it really does tower over. It's nothing against them, we've had very little to do with them. But I do want to say that we have really tried. Mrs. Ross asked that the garage roof be power washed because there was moss on it, which she found disagreeable. And so we said, of course, and we did that. And she also asked that we remove the shed that was between the garage and the fence, because she didn't like that. And we said, yes, of course, and we did that. And then we offered to pay for trees to replace a fence so that they wouldn't have to go through the trouble of, of fixing the fence to make it half-open. And they didn't want to do that, and even to lower the fence. And they didn't want to do that. So from our standpoint, we don't understand why they care so much about the height of the fence. And as you said, it, it doesn't really affect them on their side, only on ours. But we have not been sitting here like vicious little pickanees.
Thank you. Okay, counsel?
Just, I want to be sure that we're clear on the point. They require a statute of appeal based on what you said. So. of extension for appeal, based on what you said. So the court explained that he wrote an email in July, with the role decision. And you think that informed the, the applicant of what Paul's, the board made a decision about it. The applicant then responded, "Within two weeks, I complained to the court of that decision." But the statute of-
It wasn't an appeal.
... did we complain to the court?
Right.
That's what we're filing for appeal.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Ah.
That's helpful.
That's helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
But if you were to-
That's what you're doing now.
It's very clear that not just a single email here or there would be sufficient. And I ask if I had appealed at any of those times, how you would have responded. Now, it's clear that you have not read my brief, at least some of you. In great detail, it explains why this is not time barred. And I would ask you not to decide that issue until you have read that brief. And if you decide, and if, you should, and you should not decide another issue with respect to whether the fence is somehow lawful or another because it's close enough or far enough away from the wall, until I have been given an opportunity to speak to that. I asked for that in the very complaint.
Well, that's-
I knew this issue could come.
But your brief, I read your brief. Your brief deals with-
We've all read it.
Notice, essentially, and, and that's what the-
I mean, I, I don't see-
The gravamen of your brief is, and, and, you know, Mr. Stout has said that you were on-
You would have to know about Paul's decision. Well, anyway, I've stated my, I've stated my position.
Thank you. Any other more comments from the public? Okay. Oop. Thank you. Okay, so any other questions? Okay, so we are going to vote on two items. Number one is the appeal of Mr. Taft's decision on the fence. Why don't we, why don't we start with that one? And Charlie, I'm going to start with you.
My feeling is that I would, now, we're voting to either uphold Mr. Taft's-
Correct.
Or to reject Mr. Taft's appeal.
Correct.
Okay. And, and I'm voting to uphold Mr. Taft's, his decision.
Great. Uh, Janey?
Well, I, no, no, we just did, yeah. It's, it's the, it's the, it's the conformity of the fence.
The fence, we're talking-
Were you voting on the statute of limitations or the conformity of the fence?
The conformity of the fence. The conformity of the fence. That's number one.
Statute of limitations.
We'll come to that next. We're gonna do two.
I also-
Janey?
Say the conformity of the fence. Do you mean that the nine-foot combination is conforming just out of, by itself, or ultimately because of the non-conforming?
No, I think what Mr. Ross said is that he agrees with the determination made by the building, by Mr. Taft. That, that the fence is, is conforming. It's within code.
On the code, without regard, is non-conforming?
Without regard.
He, he made the argument, and this is the argument that I address, was the defense, he decided originally it was too tall. And then he issued a permit that had the limitation. But then after that, without telling me until July, he said, "Well, no, no, it qualifies as a non-conforming fence. So even though it would be unlawful, and there'd been no fence there before, it's now lawful." So those are two separate questions. And you decide how you want to. But in terms of my addressing them, I need to know, because I think that was why I asked Paul in the complaint, if you have some other reason other than non-conformity. And I was thinking very much of this, that it might be, well, it's, it's conforming because it's okay to have a nine-foot. I want to know which is. That's all I, I think I deserve that. So you decided to wish, but be clear which of those two grounds you're deciding on.
Okay.
Chairman, I, I think if we look at, at James' application, it appears he's, he's questioning the interpretation of 31025, where there are two things. He, he references 325B, which I feel isn't applicable to this. And then 325, 31025C, he was stating that a fence is not a building. But I contend that it is a, a building, considered a building according to our definitions. And so there are two different things that we're looking at, I suppose, is really, my decision was always based on my denial letter, in which there was no reason to, to put a denial based on the height.
So maybe, Paul, what, let me, let me restate it then. And maybe what I should do is really based on the legal notice. This is what we're gonna vote on.
I'm not sure we even get to that point.
Okay.
It's not from my perspective.
But, but this is in term, in terms of the-
Conforming.
Yeah, I think it's non-conforming, but, but per the legal notice, the number one item, he's seeking appeal, "A determination by the building inspector that construction performed on a fence located at 115 White Plains Road, Bronxville, New York, is compliant with a validly issued permits and the Village of Bronxville's laws and regulations with regard to fence height." That's what we are voting for. So Charlie, can I ask you again? Sorry.
I repeat my vote that the, that the building inspector's decision was correct.
Yes.
Yes. Determination was correct.
Uh, Janey?
I agree. I think the building determination was correct, the department's.
John?
I concur with that.
Okay. Mary Ellen?
As do I.
As do I. So let us turn to the next item, number two. "A determination that the time for the applicant to appeal the aforementioned determination had expired," section 310-52A.
Excuse me, can I ask?
Yeah.
Would you say when it expired, or what the date was?
Had, had expired.
No, he's looking for the dates.
I don't have the, I don't have the dates.
Well, you were notified on the 14th.
Yeah.
Okay. I can probably do this.
To be able to, to, I mean, had expired.
Sixty days it expires, huh?
Yeah.
Do you have the exp, the expiration date?
Well, it was, assuming notice was on the, was July 14.
But the decision was on the 29th of April.
Yeah, but the notice was, was the email that-
Okay.
Yeah.
That's when he was, Mr. Max Siner was informed.
So I should, sixty days from July 7, I should-
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. Uh, let me start.
September 15th, or something like that.
Yeah.
And when did you actually do, you actually started to do this in November, right?
Whatever your number of days, and you feel that July 14 is the measuring day, you can simply say, it's sixty days after-
From July 14th.
Yeah, sixty days, you have to get the actual date in the calendar. Okay. Okay.
If you didn't notice, did you notice that I also raised the question, if you substantially comply, it's required that you not have an appeal, connect around?
I'm, I'm not following. What are you saying? I don't-
There is a provision in the Bronxville zoning board, which is cited at every point, mentioned on the latter points, and said, if you substantially comply with the procedural requirements here, you will not be denied an appeal to the zoning board.
You mean denied the right to an appeal, not deny the-
Right to appeal.
Yeah, the right to an appeal, which you did have.
That's what he has.
Which we're doing here right now.
Yeah.
This is what we're, this is what we're voting on right now.
That's what we're doing here.
I just want to be fair to the judge deciding.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to vote again.
You want to vote on, are we ready to? Janey, I'm going to start with you.
Absolutely, yeah. From the, from the way I'm understanding it to be, and the sixty days passing, I think, yes, we have, the statute of appeals passed, so I think I vote. Statue of limitations, not statute, yeah. Expired.
Charlie?
I agree.
John?
I disagree. I don't think the applicant is barred by the statute of limitations.
Okay, Mary Ellen?
Um, I agree that it, that it has passed.
Uh, as do I. I, I agree with my, my. So I would then ask Mr. Stout, right, to prepare a formal resolution, which you will then submit to us, you know, summarizing our findings.
Should you make a, if you want, if you want to make a motion that those are your decisions and you're directing the, to draft this?
Okay, let, let's do, let's do that. Let me make a motion that Mr. Stout will prepare those resolutions on behalf. All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Thank you.
The decision is to be directed in the files.
Correct.
He goes to, it's either Supreme Court or Court of Claims.
White Plains, not us.
No.
Okay. So therefore, this concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter.